...of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date and time and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the middle school, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Can I get a motion to reconvene to a public session?
So moved.
Second.
Um, can I, could we, sorry, pledge of allegiance, raise for the, no?
We need to vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Um, can we all rise for the pledges, please?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, are there any further communications from the ones listed on the board agenda? Sorry. Yep, Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Here.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here. Linda, are there any further communications from the ones listed on the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Can we have a board committee reports, please? Claire, can we have the curriculum and instruction report?
Sure. Curriculum and instruction did not meet tonight, and you will see on page two of the agenda, we have no agenda items.
Thank you. Ms. Bull?
The finance committee did not meet tonight, and there are several items on the agenda and also on the addendum. These are all things that we, you know, the usual round of repairs that happen during the summer months to make sure the buildings are in good shape for when the students get back. And there will be others, now I've forgotten what you told me about.
Step repair.
Step repair at the high school that'll be on the August 24th meeting agenda. But all these things have to, you know, get out to bid and then, and get moving. Any questions? Anybody have any questions on any of the items?
Yeah, about TeachScape, and we started to mention it and then we realized we had to talk about it in an open. I'm just uncertain about what it is. It's a, it's an evaluation of teachers' system or it's an evaluation of students?
It's an evaluation tool for teachers.
To evaluate themselves or students?
No, to evaluate teachers.
To evaluate teachers.
Exactly. And, no, we're not using TeachScape for administrators, we're using another one, yeah.
And so this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, so this is a tool that's currently being used to evaluate teachers. We decided this particular year to reinstate TeachScape. It became a burden to all of the principals not to use it. After looking at the various evaluation tools that currently exist, we felt that at this juncture, the principals were well familiarized with this TeachScape and also the teachers. So rather than seeking a different evaluation tools, which would probably require some conversations with the union and then the teachers, we decided to re-implement the TeachScape.
And how does it help them? I mean, does it help them sort of calculate the various numbers, the goal numbers that they have to come up with? Why is it, how is it $25,000 worth of helpful? I'm not challenging, I'm just asking.
Well, with TeachScape, it's, it's a tool that really assesses instruction and what's best practices being seen in classrooms. The teachers are evaluated, they're given a point system. After TeachScape, it facilitates the actual evaluation, the observation, because it's in the computer, it's, it's a program, rather than the principals writing it manually. So really, it's time-consuming and it has just a plethora of tools that will facilitate that process of observation.
So it's used by the principals? Each principal?
Used by the principals per se, yes.
Okay. And do the teachers use it as well to fill in things about their own?
Sure, absolutely, they can.
Okay. It seems like a lot of money, I'm just, I'm trying to get a feel for what?
Well, it is.
Well, no, I know. In order for me to understand how it's worth that amount of money.
And we've had extensive discussions with the principals about this, and they all agree that we should use TeachScape at this juncture.
And this $25,000 is?
$25,000.
A price that?
Yeah, and it was paid before. We tried something differently, but at a very dear cost. It was very time-consuming for the principals, and principals were spending more time in observations than doing other responsibilities that, you know, building principals should engage in.
Would it be possible to table this until the next meeting, or does this need to be purchased now?
It should be, it should be purchased as soon as possible. Right now, we're already having discussions with TeachScape for continued professional development, not for the teachers.
Okay.
How to best use this tool more effectively.
Which presumably happens at the beginning of the year.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is this an alternative to the other program that the principals did not like?
Which other program they did not like?
Well, you said that, I think it was in the past that they were using another program at your cost.
No, in the past, they were using TeachScape.
Okay.
At the time that the administration thought that it would be cost-effective to the district if we created our own evaluation tool, which we did, but it was just too time-consuming for the principals, it really was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, could you speak about the wall removals and replacements in the weight room? Is that related to?
Right, Linda, you want to?
There are two wall installations planned. One is in middle school room 101, and the reason for that, we have a partition there between two small, well, one small classroom and then another classroom that's currently being used for ESL, so it's even smaller. That ESL portion is going to be converted to be a, an office for the assistant principal to middle school and high school in order for her to be closer to the middle school in, you know, kind of in the middle, more closely in the middle of the two buildings, so she can be accessible to both sides. Because it's a partition and we need a more permanent wall to be put up there. That's the one wall. The other wall is, what we're going to do is we're going to put the ESL into half of the old weight room. They don't need the full room for robotics, so they're going to split the room. Half of the room will be for robotics, the other half will be for the ESL that is now no longer going to be in middle school room 101. The wall demolition in the new weight room, that room many years ago was a preschool classroom, and people, parents would drop their children off via a door at that side of Fifth Avenue. And so there was a little vestibule there, and so there was a little wall that would separate the entrance door to the room that was a classroom at the time. So now that it's a weight room, the, the equipment that's in there needs to be, needs to have a little more room for egress. So they don't need that wall, they're going to take the wall down, and that way they can push the equipment right up against the wall and in order to allow proper egress through the room.
And all of this meets code requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
I must say, your knowledge of the minutia is really impressive. I was like, which wall is going where?
I have very detailed meetings and conversations with the facilities department.
I see you do.
I know more than I ever cared to know.
Thank you.
I remember during the tour that we took that we had heard that the assistant principal at the, the middle school and the high school was working out of the conference room that we, you know, do executive session, and she had to constantly be transitioning. So she hasn't really had an office, I don't know if there ever was an office for the assistant principal, but, yeah, but it sounds like a great idea.
Along those lines, Linda, of your, you know, your understanding of the minutia and the meetings, the meetings that go into, you know, before you bring something like this to the board table, I want to go back to a minute to the TeachScape issue, because this is kind of precisely the kind of issue that as a board member, I really appreciate having more time to digest something. $25,000 is, there was a $20,000 budget item this year that we took months to debate, and now to be presented with this on an addendum, not have any time to really process it, not, and I fully trust that you've had those conversations, Israel, but if, if we had had more time to get that feedback from you, get that feedback from the principals, then I could feel more confident voting for it, that this is, this is absolutely our only solution here. So, I mean, I would kind of second what Ann suggested, that we table this for now, we take the next couple of weeks to get a little bit more information, and then, you know, we've got a meeting before the end of August, if that would allot the time to, you know, still implement that if that's what we decide is the best course of action, just to give the board a little bit more time to digest that, because that's, that's a, that's a pretty good chunk of money.
So, I mean, do we need it for the beginning of the year?
We do.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think I'm going to trust your judgment on this, and it's a, it's a program that we've had in the past, and
We did.
We were hesitant to get rid of in the first place.
Absolutely.
And if you, if we have the money to do it, I am, I'm interested in moving forward.
Actually, it was extremely controversial when the program was gotten rid of.
Yep.
Extremely controversial, yeah.
Can you tell us when the program was taken out of circulation?
Uh, this was last year.
The last budget cycle.
Yep.
And where is it in our budget for this coming year? I mean, we don't have a line item for it, right? This is coming out of sort of the odds and ends that we will be saving money on elsewhere.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
We have breakage in other areas that I've already identified, plus we got the notice regarding extraordinary aid, and that is a term some of you may not be familiar with. It's additional aid we get from the state for excessive special education costs. We do not budget for that because it's, we never know whether we're going to get any or how much. So it's always found money, which is great. We were deferring the motion for that allocation until our new superintendent had a chance to look at our needs and make better decisions about how, how that money should be spent. But we feel that between other breakage and that, we will have sufficient funds to cover this cost.
So, all of our principals are asking for it, our administrators are asking for it, I don't understand where, where as board members, we would see that that's not a prudent thing to give them.
Do the teachers give feedback as well?
Well, it's, it's an evaluation for the teachers, I don't know, I don't know what the teachers want.
If our role as board members means anything, it unfortunately does mean some amount of oversight, which can be perceived as second guessing. I agree, it's very hard to say these things without seeming disrespectful of Mr. Soto, but, you know, if we have a job here, we, you know, we need to sort of understand what's going on. I don't think that-
And let me clarify, this is a tool that the teachers are well familiarized with, so this is not something that's foreign to them.
Right.
What we would like to do is take it up a notch and get them trained so they can understand the process a little more intimately.
Okay. Is there any other comments?
I just wanted to ask really quick, the assessment numbers that are put in, where do those come from? Just trying to understand the program. Do, I mean, I'm assuming they're still being observed by the principals, the building principals. So are those the numbers that are being put into the system, the TeachScape system? Are they student scores or what's going in there?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with the students, it has to do with teacher practice, instructional practices.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with the actual students. The students aren't being assessed, they're not being evaluated. The teachers are being evaluated in terms of their classroom and instructional effectiveness.
Okay.
So this is strictly a tool, and it's not only for evaluation purposes, you know, we engage a lot of, we, we get a lot of information from this tool, which dictates also and provides more information for continued professional development that's embedded in the classrooms.
Okay, so that's, that's-
So this is not strictly just for evaluation purposes.
Okay, so it will be giving feedback to the teachers?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And, so my question was basically asking where the math comes into play, you know, where, where are the numbers coming from? Are they from the evaluations that the principals were giving?
From the evaluation, and it calculates it automatically.
Okay, so, so is this similar to the value-added measure that's being used? Is this part of the?
Well, part of it is going to be used for the information that's being retrieved, particularly during, the information that's retrieved at the final evaluation, the sum of evaluations.
Okay.
So this is something that is a practice that's currently being done, is a practice that's been done here for about three years now, at Highland Park. So this is nothing new to the teachers.
Okay. I have a question. Is it based on Danielson?
Yes, it is.
Oh, so does it have four domains?
Yes, it does.
Oh. Well, we, in New Brunswick, we do use the Danielson model, we don't use TeachScape. But if it's based on that, it's a system that I personally really like because it doesn't get into the nitty-gritty, it gets into overall, how are people teaching? Then it's like the four domains are planning and preparation, it's domain one, domain two is, what's domain two? Something about the environment, the environment. The classroom environment? Yeah. And number three is instruction, and number four is professional responsibilities. And under each of those domains are maybe seven or eight components, and if you read it, they're all things that you would want teachers to be doing. It's not about how many tests did you get, or what were the student's scores. I find it really effective, and then when you meet with the teachers after, when you have your post-conference, you can point out, you know, where they excelled and where they could improve.
And also-
It's really a professional growth tool. Okay. But people see it as an evaluation of them, and, you know, if you give somebody a number, then it's hard.
Are you talking about Danielson or TeachScape?
I'm talking about, what we use in New Brunswick is Charlotte Danielson's model.
Right.
TeachScape is a computerized version of Charlotte Danielson's model. So maybe we can somehow get a quick breakdown of how much time that would save the principals? Is this, it would make it easier to understand if the $25,000 is, you know, valued, is it the value of that $25,000?
Well, I think that that's what they've said, is that, I mean, time-
I understand what they've said, I'm trying to get more specific information if Mr. Soto could give it. How much time would this generally save a principal?
How do you, how do you?
I would venture to say that half the time.
You're fine.
Saying that she's not sure what you say. Yeah, I would venture to say that, quite honestly, that it would probably take up half of their time, because right now, they're, they're writing everything down.
I understand.
It's, 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 it's quite a-
Lots of clerical work in the process.
And also, this model is something that the teachers pick themselves, and this is something that they've asked us to implement.
Danielson or TeachScape? Number of years ago, I mean, I mean, so a lot of this information is years old. Danielson was selected years ago, TeachScape was selected years ago, then a year ago it was removed, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, Danielson, I don't think was ever removed.
No, I didn't say Danielson, I meant TeachScape.
You said it was removed.
TeachScape.
I-
And then my other question would be, is this just for the program itself, or you had mentioned professional development? Is this also professional development, or is this just the program?
Right, this is just for the program.
This is just for the program.
Right, we're currently having conversations with the company for continued professional development.
So there's potentially additional costs on top of that?
Potential, we don't know yet.
And is this a yearly, would this be a yearly amount that we pay to TeachScape, or is this a?
Yes.
This is a yearly chunk?
And the 20, sorry, I was just clarifying, the $25,000 is for the district, not for one particular building?
No, no, it's for the district.
For the district.
Exactly.
At an appropriate time, I'd like to move to table it, when would that time be?
When it's the motion time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Is there any other comments? Personnel, Jar?
Personnel did not meet tonight, but I just would like to make note on the addendum for number nine, is the teacher, it's not 50%, it's going to be 60%.
That's numbered wrong. Three, item three, the numbering is wrong.
Number one, item three.
If you look personnel, you have three items. We'll need to correct the numbering.
Ellen, kind of goes.
I understand, yes. No, the numbering should be one, two, and, oh wait, I'm sorry, is that on the addendum?
It's nine on the addendum.
My apologies, I was thinking that was the addendum.
Oh, okay.
My apologies.
That's right.
Number nine.
Okay. I'm sorry, so what's the number? What's the?
Number nine.
Number nine, on the addend-
On the addend-
Should say six.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any comments? Okay, I am going to now move to, sorry, the Policy and Regulations Committee.
Policy Committee did not meet tonight, and there are no motions on the agenda.
Thank you. Now I'm going to move to public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing as there's no public comment, let's, we will move to the board action items. Ms. Bull, can we have the curriculum?
I do the curriculum.
Sorry?
There is nothing to move.
Nothing to move.
So that's, um-
Ms. Bull, can we have the final?
Sorry. Items one through six on the agenda, and seven through 14 on the addendum.
So, at this time, would I make my motion before we do a vote? So I would move to amendment number 14, so that we table it till the next, it's not amendment, I guess, I move to table it.
So we take that vote first, and then we take the main vote?
No, the first thing we need is the motion that Ms. Bull made.
Right, so that needs to be seconded, okay.
We need a second, and then it can be opened for discussion, at which point, and a motion can be tabled.
Okay.
So we need a second.
Second.
Table, please?
Yep.
Do I move to table, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you did move, so she, you need a second for your motion.
Oh, anybody?
Second.
Oh, thank you.
And is there any discussion? Okay. So Linda, roll call on the motion to table, please.
Ms. Versa?
No.
Ms. Berkowitz?
No.
Ms. Bull?
No.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
No.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you. Linda, a roll call on the motions, please. Oh, sorry, is there any further, is there any further discussion?
Okay.
A roll call on the motions, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes, abstain on 14.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes, no on 14.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nicola?
Yes, abstain on 14, please.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes, on items one through 13, and no on item 14.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Jar?
I'd like to move items one through, no, well, six on the agenda and seven through nine on the agenda.
Second.
Is there any comments?
Are we going to make comments on this now, or as we go around the table, or?
If you have any comments, you can feel free to make, make them.
But now is the right time, rather than when we vote?
There, we are, we're about to vote.
Okay, so now would be the time.
No, but I mean, as individuals vote.
If you have anything to say, you have, this is the time to say it before the vote. We're about to vote.
Okay, so, really, there's no preface for?
If you have anything to say.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just a little surprised that we're not doing any kind of preface as a board to the fact that one of these items is appointing our new superintendent. That's just kind of shocking to me, that, I mean, while I'm glad that it is on our agenda, I would think that there would be a little bit more discussion, attention to that before we all cast our votes. So I prepared for some remarks that I wanted to make, and I'll start those now. Adam, in your July 16th letter to the public, you stated that there were two finalists, both of whom would make excellent superintendents have selected. When it came to the final deliberations on July 20th, however, the board majority and the board minority disagreed on which of those two excellent candidates should be the final choice. As the decision only requires a majority vote, it quickly became apparent that the board majority's pick would be offered the position. In another letter dated to the public, to the public dated July 30th, Adam, you sent a letter announcing the selection of Dr. Taylor, and did so without informing the board minority. In that letter, you alluded to a rift on the board, stating, "I sincerely hope that the full board will support Dr. Taylor. It is time for our community to come together for our next school leader and put the politics that have been engrossed in our school community for the last year aside. We need to focus on the one goal we all have in common, a high-quality education for our diverse student body. I want to be perfectly clear this evening, which is why I have written down my remarks. My vote this evening is in no way politically motivated, and personally, I resent the implication. Many community members have commented at the podium and to me directly that they have appreciated the openness of this search process. The change from the prior process, which was largely conducted and carried out in secret, is directly attributable to the presence on the board of a dissenting minority that demanded a more open process. In fact, we would have preferred an even more open process, one in which the final two candidates were presented to the public for consideration. Disagreement is good, healthy, and vital to a democratic institution like a public school district. There needs to be room for all voices to be heard, and when and if we disagree, we should do so respectfully and move forward with the business of bettering our schools. To imply that to disagree is akin to tearing our community apart is, in my opinion, the real problem. False consensus is meaningless and useless. I want to assure the community that it remains my goal to work to bring our community back together. To this end, last week, I had a very positive meeting with Dr. Taylor. In that meeting, I shared my positions and made clear that I look forward to working with him collaboratively to bring about positive change in our district. We are both invested in the future of Highland Park schools, and it is my greatest hope that we are able to work through any disagreements we may have, so that we can move forward, feel that all options and solutions have been considered, and that we are making decisions in a deliberate, productive manner. In that spirit, this evening, I must vote no. I do not vote no to disparage Dr. Taylor, who is a strong educational leader that has earned the respect of many of his colleagues. I vote no because in the other candidate, I saw a proven track record of raising achievement levels for diverse populations of students. What most impressed me was that the gains were not measured using standardized test scores, but rather by using metrics such as increased enrollment in higher-level programs, increased percentages of students attaining grade-level skills, and dramatically increased college acceptance rates. I was particularly impressed with a program to engage parents before students even entered school, which led to an increase in children entering kindergarten knowing their alphabet. And all of this was accomplished in relatively short period of time in a high-poverty, racially and ethnically diverse district. I put all of this on the table to make two things very clear. First, I feel I owe my community a well-reasoned explanation for voting no this evening. I do not do so lightly, and it is my hope that laying out my reasoning will inspire the level of openness of debate I think our community expects and deserves, and sets the tone for how we will engage each other in the future. And second, I hope that my vote concretizes the kinds of programs I want to see moving forward, and the metrics with which I believe we should measure outcomes for our students. As a district, I firmly believe we will only achieve equity for our students when we stop talking about standardized test scores and achievement gaps, and start focusing on genuine outcomes for students. I thank Dr. Taylor for being here tonight, and I will leave this meeting filled with hope that our community will heal, grow, and succeed under his leadership. I sincerely look forward to all of the work that is to come.
Any other comments?
I would like to say that I am very much looking forward to working with Dr. Taylor. You really stood out to me for your experience, for your length of time in education, for the number of, excuse me, different positions that you've held within education, and I think it will be great, and I'm looking forward to it. So, welcome aboard.
Any other comments?
I won't be as eloquent as Darcy, but I gotta say, I am looking forward to working with Scott. But, because I did support him and the other candidate throughout the entire search process. That's part of how we got to be one of the finalists in that process. But when it came down to the final two and making the decision and looking at the desires of the community and the community input that we had, and looking at the track record of both of the candidates, I really felt that despite how far Scott had come, that the other candidate showed a little bit more in terms of what he could present to the community. And while I was supportive of Scott throughout the process, in the end, I will have to vote no because I think the sounder vote would have been a vote for the other candidate.
I also wrote my remarks because I'm sure everyone would understand that this is, you know, difficult when you're being told that disagreeing is the same as being disagreeable, and it's not. So I just want to read what I've prepared. Because hiring a superintendent is the most important decision that a board of education can make, I felt the need to write my remarks. As an elected Board of Ed member, I have a responsibility to the community to make evidence-based decisions and provide some reasoning regarding the decision-making process. To that end, I will begin by stating that this process was a vast improvement over the last. My belief is that our hiring process was somewhat inclusive of the community's input, and that's a wonderful improvement, and it should be celebrated. The process also honored the skills and experience of all the candidates. As a board, we were able to do a thorough analysis of the candidates' resumes, accomplishments, professional and academic publications, current and past districts' demographics, as well as their five-year plans in relation to the needs of Highland Park. After a thorough analysis, I can attest to the fact that, as laid out in Adam's letter to the community, that we did indeed have two experienced and impressive candidates, either of which would have been willing and able to navigate the Highland Park Public Schools through the process of improvement and longstanding success, as well as the difficult challenges ahead, namely, simply acknowledging our failings and taking swift and deliberate action to remediate them. As a representative of Highland Park, whom was elected to serve, I believe Dr. Taylor's experience and skill set will suit Highland Park just fine. That said, the remaining finalists both had specific experience and skills, but the second finalist, I guess, the second runner-up, had specific skills that were proven to show success in the districts where this candidate worked that present the same challenges that we have here in Highland Park. For this reason, I will unfortunately be voting no on Dr. Taylor's contract. But to be clear, this no vote is in no way a show of no confidence. I look forward to working with Dr. Taylor, and I remain optimistic in our future working relationship as board member and superintendent. Unfortunately, I cannot provide the community with hard data that proves Dr. Taylor's experience and skill set supersede those of the other finalists. What I can tell the community is that we are all dedicated to working on the same priority list as when we were first elected: equity in resources and opportunities, inclusive education and policies, transparency in governance, and outreach to the entire community. I would like to publicly welcome Dr. Taylor. I am confident he will do his best to collaborate with us on the priorities I listed.
Just a quick comment for me, if I might. You guys have pretty much summed it up. I, too, will be voting no, regrettably. I want to be clear as well that my vote is not intended as an expression of disrespect for Dr. Taylor. He's an experienced school leader who loves our community, and once he's appointed, I look forward to working with him enthusiastically, collaboratively, cooperatively, all those things, because anything less would be unfair to the students that we serve. I'll just go into one reason for my no vote. One of my main concerns on this board is equity and working toward the more equitable provision of services to all of our students. I'm particularly concerned with those students to whom we refer as historically underserved, i.e. many of our minority and lower-income students. During the selection process, the board had the opportunity to hire an administrator with a proven track record of moving a district toward equity, including by significant reduction of the obstacles to undertaking advanced track classes and by provision, as Darcy said, of out-of-school, pre- pre-K opportunities for parents and families with younger children to get them involved from the get-go. This is a person who had done this, who had improved opportunities for lower-income and minority students without diluting the curriculum or lowering expectations for our other students. I feel that that's an important priority for me. It seems to be an important priority from the community, according to the survey results. So I feel that the choice we made did not honor that priority. Nonetheless, I certainly look forward to working with Dr. Taylor. Thank you.
I want to thank the four people who are going to be voting no tonight for sharing your thoughts. It's helpful, I think, for all of us to know where you're coming from, and I'm really glad that you're all committed to working with Dr. Taylor.
Thanks, Claire, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Lynda, roll call, please.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Semeresti?
No.
No to all nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. No to one and yes to the remainder.
Ms. Gowen?
No to one and yes to the remainder.
Ms. McFadden-Giannacola?
No to one and yes to, I'll just say the remainder since I can't see at this point. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Rosowitz?
No to one, yes on two through nine.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Well, I think we should all welcome Dr. Taylor to the district. My president's report, I'm going to speak from here. I'm going to give Dr. Taylor an opportunity to address the community. I first want to talk about a little bit of why we chose Dr. Taylor to be our next superintendent. Dr. Taylor has had a distinguished career in education, effectively working in almost every capacity as a school administrator and as a teacher. Dr. Taylor received his doctorate in education from Columbia University and went to undergraduate Rutgers University. He gives his time back to his community and gives his time back to students as well still to this day, both at the undergraduate and in his present role as the superintendent of Kennelworth Public Schools. He is an adjunct professor both at Montclair State University and at Rutgers University Graduate School for Education. Dr. Taylor has addressed a number of key concerns that this district has expressed. He has supported diverse populations. His district right now is 47% non-white. He has engaged community members throughout his time, and he'll have time to speak to those. He has also mandated transparency throughout his time engaging with the community and also working with clubs and non-school clubs that are in Kennelworth community. With that, I'd like to welcome Dr. Taylor to the community and give him an opportunity to address the crowd.
Well, this is a humbling experience for me. I've been in the community now for 20 years, and I see a lot of familiar faces. I'll be honest and tell everybody that this has been a dream position for me, one that I've, not exactly the superintendency, I've always wanted to come back to the school district and work for all of you in some capacity. So this was a humbling experience for that reason, but also because the community should know that one thing that the Board of Education and the community came together around was putting together an extremely rigorous selection process for the superintendent's position. I've been in this for 23 years. As you can see from my credentials, I've held a number of positions. I have never gone through such a rigorous process as I did when I began with the Board of Education. So you should know that we had to work really hard, well, I had to work really hard to get here. That being said, so my wife Karen and I, about 21 years, we were married 20 years ago, so let's say 20 years ago, lived in an apartment in New Brunswick, and I can remember after getting married, we had all of our gifts in our room, and we were talking about what to do, how are we going to invest our wedding money, and of course, we talked about buying a house and having a family, all the things that sometimes you do talk about once you hit that milestone. And we made a very concerted effort to think about where we wanted to go, and we ultimately decided Highland Park was going to be where we're going to plant roots. And we've done that for 20 years now, and we anticipate being here for a very long time. So for me, being here gives me a sense of insight that I feel will help me hit the ground running. That being said, one of the things that Karen and I came to realize about Highland Park is that unlike some other communities, diverse communities, one thing that I think sets our town apart is the fact that we are diverse, but we don't just talk about our diversity, we actually act on it. And I recognize that one of my main charges is going to be to act on helping lower-income students, and families for that matter, folks from all different walks of life, who I have lived with for the last 20 years, to do better, to be world-class, just like everyone else who may have that leg up already. So while I may not have some of the experiences that were mentioned tonight, I can tell you, I'm going to be putting my heart and soul into making sure that I serve all of your children, regardless of who they are, from where they come, from what kind of family they come, with everything I have. I can promise you that. And I'll just plant a couple of seeds and then leave you. By telling you what I do have planned for engaging the community, I have found it to be very helpful to have regular communications with parents and faculty members and members of the board. So I'll be setting up a number of very sincerely developed, meaningful committees. We'll probably call one a community advisory committee, and I'll be asking for folks in the audience and those who might be watching this board meeting on television to join me. I'll put no cap on the number of participants, because what we will be doing is sharing in the decision-making, the community, the Board of Education, the staff, the leadership team, and myself. It's not just going to be about one person, it's going to be about all of us. So again, I thank the Board of Education for your comments and for your support, and I'm looking forward to being here as soon as possible. Thank you.
Further to the president's report, I do want to comment on the search process itself. What was that? Oh, sorry. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I've been part of, I believe this is my fourth, third or fourth, search that I've been a part of. I do believe it was the most open and transparent search that we've ever done and the most invasive, to be honest with you. I think that Scott can attest to that. And some of the information that I got back about Scott is, if that ever was out about me, I would be considering it invasive as well. But we did our due diligence, you're clean, you're good. Everything checks out. So we're happy for you to come to this community.
He's in good health.
To be clear, there was nothing inappropriate that went on. We're talking about like a credit check, stuff like that. I know he knows, which everybody understands that.
But, and so I just want to thank everybody who participated in the process, and I'm excited to start working with you. Thank you. Is there any old business?
I do have a question about the middle school principal. Do we have any candidates yet, or it's been posted?
Yes, the position has been posted on two separate occasions. The first round of interviews have been conducted. No solid candidate has been chosen. We've decided to open up the process again for the second time, and we're going to soon interview approximately maybe six additional candidates who have recently submitted their resumes. And so we're hoping to have someone onboard by mid-August, or towards the end of August. Okay?
Well, Israel, I just want to say that, A, I'm sorry that there was no one fantastic in the first round, but to thank you for then opening it up for a second round, rather than picking among candidates that you did not feel reached the bar. I appreciate that sincerely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Another old business issue?
Yep.
I'm wondering if there's been any developments in the kindergarten and first-grade special ed plan?
Yes.
Yes, so I had an extensive conversation with Ms. Kay, and we sat down and we flushed all of the information, and she...
The principal.
The principal of Irving.
Oh, Kelly, oh, Ms. Kelly. Okay, sorry.
She certainly feels, and she's had this conversation with her staff, that the current plan is the most viable one. It makes a lot of sense. We have a number of students that would really merit and benefit from having that one-on-one instruction. And so we're going to move forward with the current plan for Irving.
I appreciate you updating me. I do want to register my very strong objection to that. It breaks my heart that we are moving, I understand where you're coming from and that you, you know. This theme that questioning our superintendent is disrespectful, I don't like it. I don't intend to be disrespectful. However, my read, my understanding of special education and where it's going is that this is a step backwards for us to put kindergartners and first graders for large portions of the day in a resource room away from the general education. I mean, had that been my child in kindergarten, I would have been heartbroken. It is possible to give appropriate support in the classroom, as we know. It is possible to have sufficient aids in there. It's incredibly important, especially for children with autism and other pervasive developmental disorders, to have the social exposure, not just doing art and gym, but for most of the day. I also feel that moving people to a resource room for certain subject matters, especially in kindergarten and first grade, it's confusing to me. I mean, a child with autism, for example, does not have a special need in math. The child needs sustained social contact with his neurotypical peers. So I'm just very disappointed that the district has made that decision. I say that with all respect. Mr. Soto?
I know, I know you do. However, you know, we've had extensive discussions with all of the principals and many of the teachers about this new initiative. And rest assured that it's going to work. It's been well thought out. There's going to be a high level of integration. There's going to be a high level of collaborative teaching going on, and we're going to choose specific content areas where the neediest children will be receiving the resources to help them navigate that content area. The principal assured me that some of these students should not really be there, that they should have this resource. We've identified several students that will probably benefit the most by this resource room.
Given the current literature on integrated classrooms, on inclusion, it's hard for me to imagine a child who absolutely cannot be served in the general education classroom. I do understand that it may, well, for the entire day. I understand that it may save us money and that it's easier for teachers, particularly general education teachers. That absolutely is clear to me. For children, that is not what I view as the best thing, and it's not just me talking, it's experts, it's scholars that write about special ed, it's the contemporary movement in special education. It's difficult, but I believe it's something we have to do. Now, that being said, I understand the decision has been made, so I don't want to belabor it, but I'm very disappointed. I thank you for your thoughtful consideration of it, however.
Thank you for your questions.
Is there any other old business?
I guess I might as well put this under old business. I think it was back in June, the board unanimously adopted a resolution that dealt with the changes that Governor Christie had inserted into the budget, which resulted in our district and others across the state losing us, luckily, just about $30,000 worth of funding this year, other districts millions. It was a resolution that I worked on in conjunction with our attorney, Jonathan Bush. I think it was a very successful resolution, and it's a resolution that I would like to bring to the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. I recently received a notice from the delegate assembly saying that in order for that to happen, resolutions need to be submitted by September 8. And I forwarded that email to you, Adam. I asked for permission to speak with Jonathan about that and have Jonathan tweak the resolution basically so that it could be submitted for the delegate assembly, and I was not given permission to do that by you. So I would like to bring that to the full board and ask if the full board is supportive of bringing a resolution that we adopted unanimously to the delegate assembly with the hopes that if it is adopted at the delegate assembly, what then happens is that becomes the position of the New Jersey School Boards Association. And then it's not just little old Highland Park has this cute little resolution asking big old bad Governor Christie to not put that language back in the budget next year. We have the New Jersey School Boards Association behind us advocating with us. So if we're going to do that, we would need to have it on our next agenda for our August 24 meeting, which means I'd like to get Jonathan on that now, and I would like the board's support in that.
So my understanding is the New Jersey School Board's attorney will do it for you to tweak it for their consumption?
The New Jersey School Board's attorney will do it?
The part of their services that are part of the law, the law services that they have that provide us with insight.
I'm happy to look into that if there's support for moving forward with that resolution.
I mean, I'm not inclined to support anything really the NJ School Boards Association does, but...
On the other hand...
They're right sometimes.
If we can get them to pay for legal services instead of having us pay for legal services... Yeah, I'm perfectly happy for that, and I would have appreciated you sharing that with me earlier, and then we could have had that discussion instead of just dead air for a couple of weeks. But if the board is supportive of moving forward with that resolution, I'd very much like to, whether it's, if the, if school boards will do it, I'll certainly engage them, and if not, then I'd like everyone's okay to engage Jonathan to do that. I can't imagine it would take him much time. It's already written, it just needs a slight wording change to be appropriate for the delegate assembly. Fantastic, thank you.
Do we go ahead and make a motion?
No.
Permission granted.
I'm getting a bunch of nods, so I'll take that as, thank you.
It'd be great to hit New Jersey School Boards.
That's right, yeah.
I'm happy to do that, and I'm sure they'll be thrilled to see me coming.
Yep. Is there any other old business? New business?
Tara Canavera, 361 Crowes Road, Highland Park. First, I'd like to thank the board for taking care of the late at the Barto School handicap spot. We appreciate that. The other thing I'd like to say is, earlier, Lynda, you were saying about the money from the state for special education. Isn't that supposed to go for special education, not to pay for an evaluation system?
No, this reimburses the board for monies already spent. Because the year is completed, and this is for last year, the state provides the districts the opportunity to increase their budget by that amount, and they designate how they feel the money should be spent. So there is no restriction on the use of that money.
Okay. And my other comment is about Irving and special ed. I understand that everybody is telling us that the teachers are in agreements with this. I know they're telling CPAC and other parents, they are not in agreeance with it, and they are not in favor of putting all the kids in resource rooms and pulling them out. They would prefer collaborative classrooms, as will... They would prefer collaborative classrooms, as will all the parents in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing as no public comment, a motion to adjourn, please?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?